Now call this regular workshop meeting at the Jacksonville City Council's door. Council, you've been given a provided with a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. I'm going to take a motion to adopt, we need to do some amendments here. We're going to amend the agenda to remove item seven. The party that are not going to be here, that won't be able to be here tonight is moved off to the September 17th meeting. And we have some revised information there for you on consent item number two. You should have a copy of that. I think those are some typographical.
Some lower and some numbers.
Some lower and some numbers. For that one. And also on the item.
Item 11.
11. 11. Yeah. 11, you have a different pronoun for that. So you put it in your, I think this takes the place of what was already there.
That's correct.
With that, I would entertain a motion with that.
Agenda approval with so, excuse me. I can't even talk today. I make a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment.
Second. Any further discussion here? None all in favor, City of San Jose?
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have some minutes from the July 16th, 2024 regular meeting, and we have five consent items.
Two full of minutes and consent items?
Second. Any further discussion here? None all in favor, City of San Jose?
Aye.
All opposed. We go down to number six. This is Phase Two ERP Implementation Update, and Sabrina will be providing this information on this.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I was here once before to talk about Phase One of the ERP, and now we have moved along to Phase Two. As you may recall, the primary objective in this process, ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning, which is an overall software package that encompasses a lot of different, you know, our financials, fleet, orders, HR, all under one giant umbrella. So it's quite a large undertaking, but our primary focus was to replace our outdated software. We are currently using software from 1997, and through the years, of course, we've developed, you know, workarounds and we've made it work for us. But now it's time to look towards the future. So in doing that, we're streamlining business processes and capabilities that we currently have. We're really digging into how we currently do business, how we got to where we are, and ways that we can create some efficiencies and carry us to the future so that we're more effective and efficient in our everyday processes. And then increased functionality and better user experience. So that would be everyone from the citizens with the different customer portals to the employees with self-service portals, mobile, mobility with, you know, I can do approvals if I'm called somewhere in traffic. In traffic, that's a bad example. I wouldn't be on my phone in traffic, but if I needed to stop at a rest area, I could do approvals in the parking lot.
That was a horrible example there. The new police chief is here.
You know, I saw him, looked at me, and it scared me. I would not have approvals in my car, only in parking lots.
He actually wouldn't have a problem if you were outside the city.
Yeah.
You'd bounce back.
So workflows, which are really something that we don't have now, we do a lot of paper. So this would be more automation, less paper. Dashboards, reporting that we don't currently have or that we've built workarounds for. We've pieced a lot of different softwares together to get what we need. Again, we've been very creative, but this will just make it a lot more efficient. So a brief update on where we are with Phase, the Phase One implementation. Phase One was, we split the process into two phases so that we could not be, you know, we just, it was too much to do all at one time. And also, we would get more responsible to our RFPs if we didn't try to put out one thing and say, we need a software package that does all of this. So as part of Phase One, we, where we are currently, a matter of fact, Univeris has been here with us this week, and they are doing what they call discovery right now. It's their second onsite visit. So they've been with us all, all week going through our business processes and just sort of learning how we do things so that they'll know how we need things to work in the new system. So we went, we had two different vendors that we went with for the financials, utility billing, payroll, and human capital management, which is our HR. We are, we plan to go live with payroll and human capital management in December of '24. So it'll actually be the first payroll in January in the new system because you want to have your payroll calendar year. And then our financial and utility billing modules will go live July of 2025, and all of those products are under the Univeris umbrella. And then we have some additional modules. We do already currently use NeoGov, but we added some additional modules. Atract, which is complete now, the implementation of that, which is a recruiting tool. And then Single Sign On is complete, which allows us to use our Microsoft, our regular user login to log into all of the NeoGov so you're not repeatedly logging in. And then policy, that implementation is still in progress. I believe Police Smartman is already using that and has been for a while, but now it's something that we can use Citywide to route policies, edit them, get them approved, get them out to employees, and have some tracking of employees seeing those policies. So that's where we are currently with Phase One. We are on schedule. We signed our contract in December of 2023, and we've been just plugging along. We're on schedule and within budget as of right now. So that is, everything's going good with that. So for the Phase Two project timeline, we started back in November with a business needs assessment, just like with the first phase, we used Barry Dunn as our consultant, and we issued a second RFP. And then we received those submissions, and in February through April, we had vendor demonstrations, completed reference checks, scored the vendors, and selected our vendor in May. And since then, we've been going back and forth with contract negotiations. We are almost complete, which is why I'm here tonight, to ask for a budget amendment. But that's where we are right now with Phase Two. And Phase Two is work orders, fleet, and facility maintenance. Those were the modules and community, all the community development products. So like building permits and those things. So for Phase Two, the preferred vendor, we did select Univeris again, which they have a full work order fleet and facility management package. So they'll be able to interface with the existing, the other software that we've chosen for the financials. And then CityView, sort of like NeoGov, it's a separate software, but they're the experts in that field, and Univeris does not have a product, although they are compatible. So we've selected CityView as the community development vendor. The implementation timeline for Phase Two, from the date that we sign the contract, they will, they plan to start at typically 30 to 60 days from the signing of the contract. But once we get the contract signed, then it's a 12-month implementation on work orders, fleet, and facilities maintenance, and then 24 months on community development. So that way, we can keep that staggered timeline, and, you know, we know that we have enough resources with staff and that they have enough resources to manage the product. We don't want to hurry through, want to make sure that we take our time and get it done And the finance part. So the budget impact for the FY '25 Phase Two one-time implementation costs were just, we've already done the Phase One budget amendment, so this is only for Phase Two. The total is $953,291, with 812 of that being the CityView, which is the heavier piece of this project since it's all the community development products. And then Univeris is the smaller amount at $141. Partly, some of that is due to the fact that we already have Univeris for some of our other modules, so we were able to negotiate better pricing there, but also the modules are smaller than what we had in the first phase. And then annual maintenance, there is, of course, annual maintenance and support that's ongoing, and typically those costs do have structured annual increases, but for this phase, the annual maintenance and support is $140,000 a year, again, with the larger portion being CityView. So tonight, I'm here to just give the update and then request, make a recommendation that you adopt the requested budget amendment, which was attached to the agenda, and authorize the manager to execute the contracts with Univeris and CityView. It would be two separate contracts.
Sabrina, shoot. Go ahead.
I have a question. Will this new software require you to hire additional staff, or is your staff prepared to integrate this new software without additional support?
Well, we would not need to hire additional staff. I mean, we, we have talked a lot about that. I think our business processes, especially specifically in finance, will change. The jobs that certain people have will change into different jobs. I mean, ultimately, their function, you know, where if we had a financial analyst before that was responsible for the general ledger, she's still going to be a financial analyst, but her day-to-day job may change just because the, the software is going to change so much. So the same thing with accounts payable staff. I don't, we won't have to hire more staff for that. There is a possibility that during the implementation that we, we, I did budget extra for overtime because it's a large undertaking to have to do this project and your regular job, and oftentimes place, you know, other places will hire temporary staff. So like in utility billing, you may bring in some temporary staff to fill positions to do customer service type work while your regular staff attends the training or learns the new software. But as far as adding permanent employees, I do not know of any plan, any reason that anyone would need to do that right now. Hopefully, we get more efficient and we can do some things that we haven't been able to do in the past. That's my hopes, at least for finance. As far as, you know, during the implementation, I do expect that there'll be some overtime and possibly some temporary workers we've talked about. And at one point, we talked about a project manager, although I feel like we've done a pretty good job up to this point of not needing that. We've been able to fill those roles internally. So hopefully that is.
Just a quick, another quick question. So you just used an example, like a budget analyst's job may, job description may change. So with that being said, and you're not anticipating on hiring more individuals, is there, is there anything within your budget that you might have budgeted for that a budget analyst's job description can be rewritten and therefore, because it's rewritten with more expanded roles and responsibilities, there could be a salary increase? You're not necessarily hiring, but you're repurposing a specific job because you're assigning more responsibility as opposed to paying overtime. You're using that money for someone to have an internal raise, internal change of a job description because you've added more roles and responsibilities?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not planning that as of right now. You know, that example, it's fresh on my mind because they've been with us all, all week, Univeris has, and so we've been talking a lot about the general ledger and, you know, how we do things. It's a lot of paper, and someone's bringing a paper over, and she's checking it off and approving it. So I think her overall job function will remain the same. I just think that the way she does it will change a lot. And then as we have vacancies, you know, we, again, I only, only speaking for my department, occasionally, it's very sad when we do, and I hope I don't have any anytime soon, but when I do have a vacancy, especially with the new software, I'll definitely be taking those opportunities to see, you know, what role did this person fill? Is that still the best role, the best position to hire for, or does that need to change? But I don't have any plans to change my budget to add any positions or move anyone around or increase anyone's salary at this time.
Sabrina, have you touched, have you consulted with any other agency that are using this company or this particular software?
We did when we did the reference checks. I will say that we are the only municipality in North Carolina that is using them, which is scary and exciting. It's, it's helping, helpful to us because they're very excited about the project because, of course, if they can, you know, make everything wonderful for us, that's a great recommendation at a time when people are really struggling with their softwares that they've selected. So we did check recommendations, but we, we don't know anyone in North Carolina, and of course, we have some unique requirements, so.
What's the shelf life of this software? Now, obviously, we've been using the original from '97. I mean, what do you expect to get out of this?
Oh, my goodness. I'm scared, a long time, a long time. I don't know. I hope another 30 or 40 years, I would hope, you know?
Part of that interview process included that discussion of how many updates can you have before certain software becomes obsolete and what's the flexibility? I think that goes back to the mayor's question of how much confidence do you have in checking those references? The references may have been outside the state, but there's still organizations that have used their software for a number of years, so that's part of that challenge. And when we came down to the final two, weighed heavily into how flexible that will be as we're moving forward. Part of the value too, going back to Dr. Washington's question about reanalyzing those positions, is maximizing the current software and programs that we have, because there's some things that we just don't maximize now, so we have to figure out how to do that as we're moving forward. Some of our employees may not have the training on some software to take it next level because they may not have that time right now, or it may not be something that we're doing effectively. So as we're switching over, one of the things that Sabrina had touched on is, we're going to have two programs stood up at the same time. So for financial software, we're going to have the current and we're going to have the new. And so we're going to have to marry those operations, if you recall from the last two presentations. Once we get confident that the one is up and functioning properly, then we'll put that other one to bed and we'll move forward. That's some of those extra hours that, I don't think that impacts the job description, but there are times, back to Dr. Washington's question, when you have that position that opens, that's the optimal time for us to review every job description. It would be nice to do that consistently throughout, but if you have a vacancy, we want to review those job descriptions and then give it an update then, not when a person's in the position. So I think that's spot on in terms of when we can analyze and review, and then as those come open, and Sabrina's example, if she has holes in her operations that she can fill by changing that job description, we want to maximize that, that utility of the position. Great example.
This kind of process is a huge undertaking. You have a lot of basically double entry time while crossover happens. You have to maintain old systems and new systems. I want to budget in some extra caffeine, lattes, staff's energy sessions, because it's very stressful to go through this process. And I'm thinking in particular, you know, the civic, the development, community development, you know, that's, for two years is a long time to get through that process. So, you know, be patient with folks if you can at all, because they'll be under extra duress while this process happens. But I'm very excited to see us be able to remove some of the redundancies and silos and things that, you know, our citizens have run into and we have as well, where one system's in talking to another. This will ultimately make things smoother, more efficient, and it will be bumpy perhaps in the process, but on the other side of that, it should be much better.
Yes, we are very excited. I mean, it is a big undertaking, and it, you know, when you're, the people setting it up and closely involved, you want to be sure that you're thinking about everything and making the right decisions for people 30 or 40 years from now that will be using the software, you know? So it is a little. And I do want to also add that the finance modules, all of that is SAP, which is, it's a, it's been around since, I think, 1950 or something like that. So it is a established software with many, many customers. They've just, it was started as a manufacturing software, and it's kind of, you know, morphed and grown, and so they have a lot of, they've gotten into the government sector. But it's a, I see no reason that we wouldn't be able to continue to use it for a very long time.
I just had one more question for you. You indicated that the new software is going to be implemented July of 2025, correct? So normally, council approves the budget and our fiscal year is July 1st. So prior to that, will there be any trial runs that just before that new adopted budget is slated to take place, there is some type of trial run so that employees are not paid double from the old system and the new system and have to pay the money back? Or is that something that you would have to set up prior to that July date just to make sure that everything is within sync and continuity so that there is no double payment or the lack of payment because you're transitioning between two payroll systems?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the payroll will actually be live Janu-, it'll be live January. So it'll be, it'll, will go live in December so that it's the first full pay period, the first paycheck in January so that you can get a full calendar year. But prior to that, we will run both programs side by side in the testing phase to make sure that what we're running in the new system matches to the penny what we're running in the old system. So everything from the benefits to the taxes, social, everything is exactly the same, and then we will process payroll in the new system. So no, no concern of paying them both.
The old system won't be taken down until we know the new system is in place and running correctly.
And even then, we still have, it's a little bit of a complicated process because now we have our financials on one system and our payroll on one system, and we have an interface, we will, we will have an interface built between the two so that the payroll can talk to the general ledger still. So it, you know, it's kind of, it's, yeah, it's complicated, but we will, we definitely will make sure everything's working exactly as it should be before we switch it.
Thank you.
All right. All we got?
That's all I got.
Any more slides?
She didn't.
All right. Council, you've been asked to approve the budget amendment and authorize the city manager to execute these contracts, for vendors on Phase Two of the ERP implementation. Just move.
Second.
Any discussion? Here, none all in favor, City of San Jose? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Down to number eight. Scott's up. Scott's up in back here.
Pun intended, right? Well, thanks for, for having me. Excited to share with you guys. I have Keith Williams is here. He's the secretary of our board. I thought he was here to support me, but then his wife walked in, so now I'm not sure.
Not yet. She's here to support him.
Better than you, Scott, sorry.
So when Josh asked me to come speak, he said, you know, give a little history and go through, and Wally and I have a bet of who can go longer, so to get started. So, so back when Cindy and Dr. Washington were toddlers, the Sports Commission was founded.
I wasn't able to go in 1999.
Yep. By the action of the Board of Commissioners, Onslow County, and the City Council, and we became a freestanding nonprofit in 2001. So we are 25 years old this year. The first ever Sports Commission was formed in 1979, Indiana Sports Court, but that was a rarity, really, for, for an area this size, I think, very forward-thinking, because sports commissions were kind of a thing of the 90s. The, the national organization we belong to had their first meeting in 92. So good job Jacksonville and Onslow County. And both groups have funded us since the inception through tourism. So our mission, you know, we're here to foster economic development through sporting events and to, to bring visitors to town, but I don't want to under, or disqualify that quality of life piece. You know, we hear so often, you know, there's nothing to do, but then we offer lots to do. So, and then once they figure that out, we got folks participating in the race series or coming to the boxing events or whatever the case may be. And as we know, here in the future, that's going to get even better. So why sports tourism? Again, this is from Sports ETA, in 2023, 128 billion spent in the U.S., and that was up 11% over 2022. And we saw during the recession and we saw during COVID, sports are really recession-proof, particularly with kids. If your kids are playing, you're going to do it. So the other thing that doesn't get talked about a whole lot, and the last number I have is from 2022, so the tourism offsets $128 per resident. I mean, you do the math on the last sentence, that's $26.5 million that we can say is offset because of tourism, and not just sports tourism, but all tourism. So sports tourism, definitely big for, for folks spending money. So since we also just finished our fiscal year, the estimated economic impact from fiscal year 2324 was 2.2 million. That's from all sporting events in Onslow County. That's not just the Sports Commission events. And then estimated room nights, 9,576. So, you know, we're, we're all about room nights and getting visitors here, but we, we also don't need to discount the day tripper. You know, we've got folks coming from New Bern and Wilmington and all those areas. I know my boys were in a, in a tournament a few weeks ago in Wilmington. We spent some money. You know, you're eating out, you're doing all those things. So, you know, we don't discount those folks, and we calculate that in there as well. So past five years, I excluded the COVID year since everything was shut down, but the, the average is 2,707,000, and then room nights, 7,127. And even throwing COVID in there, that only drops to 2.2 million and 6,601 room nights. So not, pretty steady, even, even throwing that in there. So I thought you guys might be interested in seeing just last year, all the city departments that we partnered with. I think we basically covered everybody. I don't know if we, I don't know if we used you, but we'll figure it out next year. We'll get some of those services. So, so across all these different events, especially with New Rivers Flash and Frogman that we'll talk about, we appreciate the partnerships. And then that got us thinking about, well, what about all the partners from last year? We won't try to read those, but those are all local people that we partnered with just, just last year. And so if you go back over years, I'm sure there's, there's many, many others. So as far as our events in last fiscal year, we did 12 owned and operated events, and I want to camp out here just a little bit and, and explain. So owned and operated, that means we start this thing from scratch. We handle every bit of planning, organizing, every permit, making sure there's toilet paper and the porta-potties, marketing, every aspect of it. And so we average one of those a month, which I'm pretty proud of with two and a half staff members. But then we also support 15 other events. And to count that, we get, we sit down with lots of folks and give advice on races and this and that. I'm not even counting that. We either, this means we either gave them money, we worked the events, or we loaned them equipment. So 15 on top of that. To give you an example there, you guys are all familiar with ECI Basketball. It's, it's the biggest sporting event as far as room nights and economic impact that we host. So when we come to the TDA asking for money, and I just shared this with them a few weeks ago, one of the things we do, we give out grants from that money as well, and that accomplishes two things, that help us, you know, have a handle on what's going on, but it also keeps them from coming to the TDA asking for money. So, and then this was, but just with ECI last year, we gave them $8,903 to offset officials' expenses to buy some equipment to do some things that we were doing there. Now, the other thing I wanted to talk about, because when we get to this 400 acres, so we get requests for proposals all the time for various sporting events that we could go after. We can't bid on 90-plus percent of those because we don't have the requirements that they give us on facilities. Now, you know, owned and operated, not only are you responsible for everything that happens, you're also trying to grow that audience in that event, and it takes a few years. Whereas if you bid on something, that built-in audience is coming to your city. If Josh's daughters are in the AAU regional in Jacksonville, he's coming to Jacksonville. I don't have to try to convince Josh to bring his team to a tournament here in Jacksonville. It's just a tournament. So that's, that's the big, that's the big difference there. And not that you're not involved in some of those, but owned and operated is a whole different level. Now, the great news about that, nobody can take it away from us by bidding on it. The bad news is you don't have that built-in audience. So. So a few, a few things here, so just, just a few pictures. So I'm proud of what we do have and what we create from that. I mean, we've, we host a couple of boxing events a year. The New River Splash Triathlon has become a, a kind of a signature event. A beach run, again, that's not something every community has, so that is something that can attract those out-of-towners. There's an ECI picture. We've done strong men, strong woman competitions. Obviously, our Hall of Fame and, you know, so lots, lots of different events that we've done, triathlon, trail runs. So this weekend, we have a brand-new event. It's called the Onslow Cup. It's a disc golf event out at Northeast Creek Park. It sold out very quickly. 90 is the most we can do in a two-day tournament. And less than 24 hours after being open, I think we had 75 people sign up. So excited, it's going to be a little, little wet, I think, this weekend, but we're excited about hosting that. So we're always looking for new events that we can do with the facilities that we have. Another thing that we did this year is the fifth anniversary of the, the race series that we started. So through 2023, 6,137 different individuals had participated in that. Once we get through this year, it'll be over 7,500. And there's 11 races in, in 2024 series. Six of those are hours and five are community races, including your race that just happened last weekend, Running with the Law. I was entering all the results today and got Ron's time in there. It was world record pace. So again, that's more of those community partners, but, but that's something that's continued to grow over the years and just an example of something that we started. Now, we've also done things that didn't work, or we had to kind of let them go by the wayside for temporarily just because of facilities. So we tried a trout series that we are really excited about, offered some big money, and it was mostly locals. And in year two, numbers actually went down just a little bit. So we scrapped it. We've done some things like car shows, and those were fine, but that's not something you're going to do every year. And then you see, it's really a pretty sunset picture, but if you look closely, it's a football jamboree, and there's some lacrosse pictures. Those were fantastic events. The lacrosse brought lots of out-of-town teams. We just don't have anywhere to do them anymore. You know, OCSA kind of went by the wayside, went downhill anyway as far as, you know, being able to maintain it. Now, all those things, when we get the facilities, can come back. And Battle at the Beach Soccer used to be massive, and now it's kind of small. Again, facilities, it can be huge when we come back. So, you know, again, we try something, we give it a year or two and see if it's going to grow, and then we make a decision. I, I'll give you an example there. The Sledgehammer Beach Run was, it was good, it was kind of steady for two, three years, and then year four, we tripled in numbers and almost every bit of that growth was all out-of-towners. Again, that goes back to that owned and operated. So we don't give up on something too quickly, but we always do two years and then we kind of make a decision from there. So Josh asked me to specifically talk about the Frogman event. Logan, I wonder why that upper right picture is in there. So, and I was hoping that Terry Campbell was going to be able to be here today. So we can always say we hosted the first-ever event on the 400 acres. And we used lots of city partners on that, Wally's crew and Michael's crew and Susan's crew and Anthony and Alexis came out, but we, it was an event that, again, I wish Terry was here, I won't do it justice, but, but it's in honor of Chris Campbell and 30 others who were killed in Afghanistan, actually 13 years ago yesterday. And if you didn't know Chris, he, he grew up here, went to White Oak High School, and it was something the Campbell family started several years ago, and then it kind of died off during COVID. And I reached out and said, hey, let's get this thing going. They said, oh, we're about to move it to Virginia. I said, why? They said, we can't find anywhere to do it. I said, give me a week. So started making calls and, and obviously the 400 acres was sitting there, and so we took advantage of that. And the crews cut some trails in for us, and we used some existing trails and cut in shooting alleys. So it was really three events in one. It was a trail run, and then there was a 3D bow hunter's challenge, and then there was a dinner that evening. And in, in year one, we had across all three events, 450 participants. The race sold out, so that'll be bigger next year. And then the bow hunting portion has all kinds of potential for growth. There's not many in the area, and this had 31 targets, one for each of the fallen, and most of these have 10 to 12 targets. So they loved that aspect of it. So we moved it out of summer, we're going to do it in March next year. But again, even once the 400 acres is developed, if there's trails and things on there as planned, you know, these kind of events can continue. So let's, let's talk a little bit about that. There's just some potential, and there's, there's plenty more. And, and these are all things we can bid on that have that built-in audience, not just start from scratch. Now, there's plenty of things we can start from scratch and things that we can bring back and things that we can grow, but this is just a sample of things that we can bid on. And again, there's crazy stuff on here. I mean, you know, breakdancing and juggling and just things you don't even think about. You know, you think about the obvious basketball, volleyball, soccer, football, those kind of things, but, you know, band competitions and just lots of things. I mean, in 2025, at the Commons, we have two Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu events coming, one early January and one early June that are going to bring about 600 to 800 competitors. Now, you take an event like that, you take our Carolina Gloves, you take ECI, those are all great events that we, that we host. They also all can grow if you've got the space to do it. You know, talking with, with Mark Hornsby, our partner for Carolina Gloves, he said, hey, there's events where there's like four rings set up and they go for four days. And obviously with ECI, you know, we're limited in the number of teams now. And Wells Gullidge, who, who runs that is, because he coached him, he's got some connections in the NBA, and they're talking about, hey, you know, Adidas tournament, Nike tournament, Under Armour tournament, if, if you build this facility. So, you know, and again, meetings, conferences, expos, dinners, concerts, on top of all of the sporting stuff. So we are really, really excited about the next 25 years at the Sports Commission. I won't be there for all 25 of those, but, but we're excited about, you know, what can, what can take place and, and again, what's already happened. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have or, or comment on anything.
Council any questions?
I'm in a trance looking at all those events there.
Well, I didn't realize badminton was an Olympic sport till the other night. I was sitting there watching.
So it's breakdancing.
Yeah, I didn't know all that stuff.
Yeah, what is foot?
That's indoor soccer.
Yeah, essentially indoor soccer.
They can't bang it off the wall like he used to on that stuff.
Quad ball.
It's, it's kind of almost like an indoor soccer, but you use your hands. It's not handball. Again, there's some, there's so much stuff out there.
See pickleball up here.
Is it a, is it a juggling, under number two, juggling? You got to come down like five, six.
The, the other thing, since I, since I mentioned the disc golf event, if, if on the 400 acres, we can build, I'll say world-class, for lack of a better term, disc golf course, you know, we can host, you see, I put there an A level. We can host a B level now, but we can host an A level that's bringing in the top pros and even sometimes TV coverage and some of those sort of things. Also, two, last weekend, I guess it was, we supported a World Series of Arm Wrestling event over at Blackheart, and that's on Tubi and several other channels. It's given Jacksonville some pub. And so there's, there's just, it's, it's really limitless when you start talking about having the space and the, and the infrastructure to do things.
Well, it's crazy how big esports have gotten. I mean, you don't even think about that. I mean, that, that market's really grown up.
They're in like the multipurpose indoor complex now, not in a meeting room. I mean, it's crazy to think we don't really have a spot to do esports, but we really don't.
Yeah, because some of those events get huge.
Oh, absolutely.
We have a young population, and that's the benefit of a truly multi-purpose complex. We have all of the outdoor sports, we have indoor sports, we have all of the opportunities for things we've never done before, couldn't build on before, as you said. And that's just win, 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 and it helps to, you know, nobody wants to build a facility and it sit unused. This will ensure that that facility is well utilized consistently. I mean, you're already doing 25 events a year, you know, owning and supporting. This will open the floodgates essentially for things.
In addition to the local needs on that, yeah. Mayor, our goal, when we talk about the Sports Commission and we talk about our partners with TDA, it's to make sure that council is, is reminded about these partnerships. The only way we can be successful is with these partners. You recall, we talked about Sturgeon City, 25 years. It's a great theme here that we're talking about, a quarter of a decade with two strong partners, and we're trying to move items forward, but we can't do it without these partnerships. And for the city to look at it, we offer a, a level of service, Sports Commission offers a different level of service, and working together, we can be successful on a number of events, just like what Ms. Ed was just saying. There's 27 events plus the local activities that Scott's team's already putting out there. But the same kind of comment, if you were to go back to the, the input for the TDA to go into ECI, you talked about about $9,000 input. What was our economic impact for ECI this year, plus or minus 350? Uh, ECI was, if I look at the right page, man. Um, well, never mind, I take that back. Yeah, but essentially it was about 350. I was thinking 357, 357,000 dollars or something. And 800 room nights. Yeah. So you think about the, the input that TDA has on the front end, and what that does is it creates that mechanism, like we talk about community support items. It creates the mechanism for TDA to have the partner to handle those funds, and then the money goes out, and then we send out this email that Scott sends us that says, economic impact 357. That's incredible. Not only are we doing, that's, we're doing a community support, we're supporting our hotels, our gas stations, our restaurants, and as we've said over and over again, it's the only way we continue to have this many restaurants, this many hotels. But I tell you, if you don't have these partners, there's no way our community's going to have it. It doesn't matter how many young marine families we have, it doesn't matter how many staple families we have in the community, without the partners that can push the items out in the community, this list here, it's the craziest thing I've ever seen. To imagine we could have that, I don't even know how you're going to get that in 365 days. You're going to, even with any kind of complex, you're going to have to start making choices. And how great will it be to have Scott have to make choices who we're going to recruit on those? I checked, there's only a few weekends in a year, so there's more than that listed up here. So how are you going to make those events happen? It's, it's awesome to see the synergy between partners as we move forward, to know that we'll be able to do that for our citizens. I think it's going to be, it's going to be overwhelmingly exciting to know we can, we can do these events. And that's, that's what we want as staff, is to keep pushing forward the goals of not only the council, but the goals of our partners. These are our people, these, this is what we're doing, and that's the only way we're going to have success moving forward.
We moved, we, we moved to phase two. We signed off on that tonight.
Less than 20 minutes ago, Mayor. It's a big deal.
So, I mean, that's pushing forward.
And we really appreciate all your support and all that you do, not only financially, but staff support, staff time, things. It's, we, we could not do what we do without you guys.
Now, where's your quarters at now? I mean, where are you working out of?
At Commerce Center. Yeah, that's another partner. When you think about the Chamber facility, that's another partner who's providing space in a building that the Chamber just paid off last year, and then they have space for partners because that's the space we have in the community. There's not another space for these partners to locate, and so the Chamber steps up and says, hey, we're your, we're your place to be. And they lead through that. And I think that's another excellent example, Mayor, of bringing together like-minded partners to be successful.
Scott, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Senator.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
You're okay. We're a Pelicans fan.
All right, Keith's going to go buy me dinner now. Wally, did you time it?
I'm sorry. Good, good.
Is he leaving?
I can do some of that break, break stuff. Oh, oh, you got to, you got to dance to get, I can, I can break something.
Down on floor. You're a different kind of break.
Yeah, I'm reminded of, I'm thinking sometimes I'm like the old ERP, you know.
Come and trade again.
Get a little glitchy, though.
All right, Wally, with me further review.
Get left following up.
We're talking about your resurfacing power project.
Council, I am really competitive for anybody that knows me, so it's going to be hard for me, but I'll let Scott win tonight. Really, I would have to like 6:35, so I'm going to play golf, so I'm going to, I'm going to go shorter tonight.
Those were wins, Wally. Those were wins.
You're reading up your time, Wally.
That's right. So tonight, we want to talk to you a little bit about the next phase of our streets. We, we've talked about street resurfacing in our maintenance program multiple times. You've seen some of these slides, so we'll spend a lot of time, you know, focusing on those. But this just kind of shows you our street network. We have 166 miles of streets that we maintain. We rate those streets every three to five years. We shoot for three, but by the time we get everything done, it's really somewhere between every three and five years. We did it last in 2022, and we had an outside company do it, that's what they do, named Fugro. And they came in with a big fancy van and drove around and used everything from laser to radar and pictures and imagery and everything. So we ended up with a pavement condition rating for each of our street segments and then overall for the city. And I know you've seen this multiple times, but basically it ranges from zero to 100, and 100 is great and zero is bad. And we, we fell right in that fair category, and with all of our streets as an average, the worst one, I don't think anybody will argue, is DeWitt Street. And it is between a zero and 10 in some segments. So in 2013, through staff and council discussion, we decided to move toward focusing on the kind of those mid-D, kind of the, the poor streets to the low C, which is kind of that, that average or fair rating, and, and focus our resurfacing dollars there. The reason is it was significantly cheaper and we could do more streets than targeting those failed streets. Now, admittedly, what happens is you end up picking up some of your pay, you know, poor and, and fair streets and moving those back up to good or very good, and your worst streets continue to get bad. The, the great thing about that is it took us from about a million dollars a mile at the time to roughly $400,000 a mile for what we could pave. And then, you know, with what we've seen recently, we are facing even greater challenges because, as you know, everything has gone up, especially street resurfacing. So right now, what we're doing is roughly between three and five miles a year with the money that we have available. Again, we spend total for maintenance and resurfacing the activities, you know, we budget somewhere around 1.7 to 1.9 million dollars a year. We don't always get all that money spent because of either projects that we finished that, you know, we didn't have, you know, we could have done more if we had programmed additional streets or because we're trying to get streets programmed into our, our system, or we just don't have enough money to continue. So basically, the problem is that, you know, four miles a year, our streets have to last us four years. So obviously, that is a challenge, and they say the design life is 20 years. So following with what Sabrina talked to you earlier about, you know, we're always looking at how we can be more efficient and effective, one of the things that we started doing is looking at what other communities do. And right now, Durham is kind of leading the, the street preservation and resurfacing program. They have a lot more miles than we do, almost triple, and have a whole lot more money than we do, almost quadruple. So, you know, but they are facing the same challenges we are. So, you know, but they are facing the same challenges we are. Things are getting more expensive and they're trying to refocus their dollars and create a preservation program. So this is their philosophy. They were doing basically what we do. We kind of allow streets to fall down to that fair-poor, and then we spend money on them, bring them back up, and then the cycle happens again. And you'll notice that over the life of a street, basically, it's good for quite a while, and then when it starts to deteriorate, it goes fast. And that's from different things. Once you start, once a street starts cracking, water gets in, a freeze-thaw cycle happens, and you can have a okay street go to a poor street very quickly. Or you could have utility failures underneath your street that take it there even faster. So the challenge is you're, you're fighting this cycle, and it did, once it starts deteriorating, it deteriorates very fast. So what they're trying to do is basically through preservation, pick that up as soon as it starts to fail and spend less money on it and bring that back up. So what they're really doing is focusing on those good to very good streets, and that's where they're spending a lot of their money. And then they're coming back and getting additional funds to pick up those failing streets. So here's the reason that they're doing that. This is kind of what drove their methodology. They're really focusing on preservation because they can do essentially a third more streets than they can do in that resurfacing. And I calculated that out, and that's very close to what we spent last year per mile. So, and you know, a lot goes into that because we have some streets that are only 18 feet wide, you know, asphalt, and we have some that are like Northwood's Drive that have 30 feet of asphalt. So obviously, when you're doing 30-foot wide street, it costs a whole lot more money to do the same length. So you can see that really their idea is to try to spend money sooner on their streets. Now, there are different methods, and some of these we've used and some we have not. And some we've tried and they failed. So these are the tools that Durham is focused on. There's more, but these are the, the primary tools that they're using in their preservation. So what they do is they crack seal, and I should note that they do none of this in-house. They contract it all out. So what they have is an engineering department that hires contractors and they run it all. So they don't have like a streets crew internal that can go do crack sealing like we do. So we, we do the crack seal. We have never used the microseal. We have done the chip seal maybe once or twice since I've been here, and that was very early on. And we got a lot of complaints from that because anybody who's been on a rural road, basically what they do is put down tack and then they put down rock chips and they leave it. And, you know, the, I, I can remember because I was, you know, I don't live in the city to live on a gravel road, right? So that, that came with challenges. And then Cape Seal, which is not really a new method, but is catching more attention. And basically what Cape Seal is, almost all of these combined. And that's really where Durham is putting a lot of their emphasis. Their, their primary emphasis is on microseal on their good streets and Cape Seal on their streets that are fair to poor. So this is what the process looks like for Cape Seal. You go through and do any base repairs that you need to do if you have a utility cut, cut is settled, or, you know, just a small area where you have base failure and potholes starting to develop. You go through and you fix those, and then you crack seal all the, the cracks, the joints, everything. And then they come through and they install a chip sealed layer. So they'll go through, tack it, put the chips into it, and then they let it sit for a period of somewhere between a week and two weeks. And basically let the traffic work those chips into, into that tack coat and then work that extra off to the sides. And then they come through and clean that up and sweep it real good. And then they come through and put the microseal on top of that so it seals that, that chip, those chips in. So this is kind of what that process looks like. So you can see this is the, the chip seal going down where they just tack it and they don't lose, for lack of a better term, gravel into it. And then the, the cars basically over time work that in. And then this is what the microseal looks like going down on top. And that color is not, is not an optical illusion in the picture. That's actually what it looks like. It looks chocolate brown going down. So it's, as a matter of fact, we were there when they were putting it down. So it's, for residents, it's a learning because it, you know, they have to convince them if they're using an asphalt product because it's not going down gray or black. Now, the side you see is also microseal going, that's gone down and it's gone through the cure process, which takes several hours to about a day, and it starts turning darker. And as it cures, it actually turns darker. And then this is just another picture where you can see they did both sides and then did the, came back and did the center. And this is something, you know, if you wanted to picture something in Jacksonville, this would be in Northwood's Drive. It would take that many passes to do something as wide as, you know, to do a street as wide as Northwood's Drive or even Huff Drive. So what, you know, what we'd like, and then that's the completed, if you look careful and it was hard to see, it's not as smooth as asphalt. So I want to be right up front and let you know, it's not as smooth as a surface course of asphalt. It, you can fill the chips underneath. The whole, the whole cracks, I'm sorry, the whole chip seal process, microseal process works out to be somewhere around 3/8 of an inch thick. So there's not a whole lot of, you know, having to move valve boxes or, or manholes, which helps save. It does leave an edge along the curb line. You can see it looks fairly clean here, but if you're out there, it's actually raised, you know, less than a half inch, but there is a little raised area. So what we'd like to do is talk to you about a pilot project and try Cape Seal here in the city and see how it works. It sounds great because it's somewhere between a third and half the cost of what we're currently doing. And we can do, or we think based on Durham's success, that we can do some streets that we normally would have milled and overlaid. But it does come with some challenges. It does require additional maintenance prior to doing the Cape Seal. If we're just going to mill and overlay, we don't worry about the cracks because we're going to mill them off. We don't have to, you know, we, we work around the manholes. The, the staff and residents are used to the whole paving process. You can pretty much, once they roll pavement, it can still be hot and you can put traffic on it. With the Cape Seal, there needs to be some cure time. But when we asked cure time, they said several hours, although when we were there, they were doing a major street and literally they had finished one prep, one pass, and they were detouring in the other lane. They got to the end and they picked up and went back to the other end and moved traffic over. So they didn't give that street real long to sit, but he also said, you know, it's a collector and we don't have time to let that one sit. But they know that they'll probably have to come back to that one a little bit sooner. The chip, you know, the chip seal time period, it's going to look like a gravel road, it's going to feel like a gravel road because it's basically gravel sitting on top of tack. So we will end up with the complaints of rocks coming up or rocks getting pushed off the side of the road or into the curbing that we'll have to deal with. And that's something that you want to be aware of because they may contact you, your, your citizens and constituents may contact you directly to say, hey, you know, why are we putting gravel down? There is an education process that goes into it, and David Durham has said that they go through that education process every single time they do this. It does add a thin layer, and so you can see it and feel it. It's not as smooth as asphalt. And then the, the big thing that they can really point it out, and we saw instances of this, is dry to, dry turns do impact that microseal level, sorry, layer. So what a dry turn is, is where somebody backs out of their driveway and stops and turns the steering wheel and then starts driving forward. So what happens is as the weight of that vehicle's sitting in one place and the tires turn, it actually moves that microseal and exposes that aggregate. And sure enough, when we walked one of the streets they had done about two days before we got there, you could see every resident that did a dry turn down that street.
And you think you're going to educate people not to do that?
Well, they've had some success because on the street we, on the street we walked, there was about, there was probably two dozen houses on that street, and there was probably eight that, that really had dry turns coming out. And really, you know, for anybody, you know, that's worried about tires, it is better to turn when you're moving anyway. It's not as hard on your tires, but it is, that is part of an education piece, you know?
They educate them like flyers, like?
They did. What they found works best is they do the flyers, they do the, they do the, they have an interactive map, they have social media, but they do door-to-door. Which when we do a project in a neighborhood, we do door-to-door with our inspector anyway. So we try to go by, you know, we, we do things, you know, we, we try to educate them about the process. And a lot of times what we're trying to do when we go door-to-door, especially if we're going to close off a street, we're trying to find out if there's somebody with a disability or somebody that's pregnant. We've had that one on a couple of our projects where somebody's pregnant and expecting. So we need to know that if we have to get that resident out, we have a plan to get that resident out in a moment's notice. So it's not uncommon for us to go door-to-door, but that's what it's going to require. So what we, we do have money set aside already in a project to try a pilot for Cape Seal. We set aside 250,000. We think that that'll give us somewhere in the general area of 50,000 square yards. So depending on how long the street is, or how wide the street is, will depend on how far we go. If we do a cul-de-sac, obviously that's not going to go as far. I will say that when we were there, cul-de-sacs were not as successful as straight pavement because the cul-de-sacs require handwork. So you have somebody out there doing it instead of having the machine do it.
Well, would you use this on like high-traffic areas? I know some of the big high-traffic or DOT roads, I get that, but I'm saying that some ones that we are responsible for, would you necessarily want to use this on those areas?
So?
I think more of your neighborhoods.
We, we want to try it on some high-traffic areas. And we actually want to try it on one area that would receive truck traffic. What I will say is we went to Durham and we went to, I said I want to see a high-traffic road that was a collector street and had been down for more than three or four years. Well, Durham didn't start doing this until 20, like 2018, I think it was their first, 2017 was their first project. And they took us to a, to one that they had done in 20, that they paved in 2019. And I get, I had to look hard. I could tell that it was Cape Sealed, but I had to, I had to walk it and look hard. The average citizen would not have known. And we had a skateboard and it was smooth enough. We'll just leave it at that.
We have the dry turns either.
And, and that's right.
In the straight areas, it's the end of the driveway you're going to have that problem.
I was really impressed. I actually took a close-up picture because you could see at the edge of the road, it was strip pavement. You could see the different layers and you could see the chip seal and the microseal. I was very impressed. That road kind of sold me, you know? I wasn't as excited with some of the newer roads, but it really looked good after it had been down a period of time.
I guess I was more worried about like truck traffic, you know, the heavy weight and all that stuff going through.
That's what we want to see. We want to see how it'll do. And he said that they've actually tried it on straights that were alligator cracked, that the contractor said it wouldn't work. And because of that chip seal bridging those cracks, it, it had done very well. So what we would try to do is select streets that vary in condition, location, and traffic type. And we would also vary, what they did say is it works best on strip pavement roads because you don't have that edge to worry about, you don't have to worry about keeping it out of the gutter. So we would vary, we would try to do both strip pavement and curb and gutter streets. And the last thing I'll say is we will try to pick streets that are not necessarily in one of our paving programs now. So we would be picking streets that we won't be getting to for a number of years.
Ah, you missed it.
One minute, though. That's pretty close.
Very informative, though, to get it out, so.
The exciting thing is if we're doing this for one-third to one-half of the cost, that in long-term should free up some funds for some of those failed streets that we just can't seem to fund and fix.
Part of, part of the challenge with our failed streets is it's not necessarily the street that has failed.
Utility's under it.
If the utility's underneath. Brookview Drive is a great example. And we spent, for that one section of Brookview Drive around the circle, we spent almost a half million dollars in that stretch because we had to do the sewer and then where the water was located, we had to do the water. So those are, you know, that's a $2 million a mile street all day long, probably worse if we get to it 10 years from now. So the, the plan there is, but, well, the good thing there is you fund it from different funds. So the water and sewer pickup, the water and sewer portions, if there's stormwater fixes, we use the stormwater to pick up those portions, and then we focus our paving dollars on the paving part of that.
That's what we're kind of trying to do on DeWitt Street, right?
That's exactly what we're doing on DeWitt.
No, it's probably like that, you want to go back both asphalt and that, right? You wouldn't do this one, anything that nature.
That's correct. We would go back with a, actually on, we'll go back with a base course and then a surface course.
That's a complete overdue there.
That's right. The base course will be a four-inch or five-inch layer of heavier asphalt, heavier-duty asphalt, and then we'll just put a driving course or surface course.
Is it from like Jeffs all the way up to Smithfields? Or is that like you have to separate it?
We'll have to do segments because the sewer is the worst part, the sewer is the worst, I think it's white oak and red oak that kind of come in very close together. And I think that is the worst section, and our sewer is failing in that area. So we've got to replace all of the sewer in that area to do, but the, the plan is to resurface from, I think it's, I don't think it actually goes to Jeffs. I think it starts at, what's the, what's the road that comes in right there beside former Elizabeth Lake?
North Shore Drive.
North Shore Drive.
Right there in the curve.
It would start there and, and come up.
Gotcha.
The best part about this pilot program that Wally's laid out is the fact that, you know, a lot of times when you're trying a new material, you just go out and try it. You just pick a spot, you decide this is where we're going to go, and we do it. What Wally and his team have laid out is different environments, different streets, and different traffic. With any type of chip seals or any type of sealant that goes on the street, back to, back to Mr. Sosa's question, you want to have the traffic because it sets it. Well, here, with us not having this process before in Jacksonville, we need to see how it's going to set and then how our traffic patterns are going to impact it based on the different type of street there. So I think the, the leadership that Wally and his team have put forth here for this pilot program, albeit a smaller amount on a project, but it could really have long-term positive impacts for us. The council just needs to be ready for the feedback, knowing that the pilot, and once we start, we'll send that out for, to you so you can be ready to field calls. And then when we're finished, we'll send you out some final reports just on the, the visibility, plus we want you to check it out. Then Wally will have a follow-up report where he'll come back and give us an analysis on the pilot because it'll be part of next year's program if it's successful. If it's not successful, it won't be part of next year's program. And that's why you've got to know it now so it doesn't blindside you when someone calls and says, "Wally's putting rocks on the street out here."
Or instead of saving you tax dollars, that's what we're doing.
Right. Well, we got to stretch it, and that's that 166 miles. The best part too is instead of just trying to figure it out on our own and saying, "We're going to a conference," and we had a really good person sell us a good product, they went to Durham. And Durham's an awesome partner to go and listen to because they try things and they have successes and they have failures, and they're not afraid to succeed or to fail. This is a good program. And, and as Wally said, their numbers are a lot higher than ours, but they figured out a system that can work. So for us, if it can work, I think it's great to add to it, but different climate. So for us, i- if it can work, I think it's great to add to it, but different climate, different traffic patterns, as you already said, truck traffic being a difference. So I'm excited to see what the product's going to be on the back end of if it works or not, because.
We can just call it Wally's science project. He's got a known process, he's got to test all the various.
It's a beautiful project and that's why it matters to bring it to the council so you can see on the front end. Very exciting.
Mr. Hanson, for this project, did you say that it will be taken care of in-house or will it be outsourced?
We will have to, so we'll do the upfront work, like the cracked seal, any utility cut repair or base repair that we need to do, but the actual application will go out and we will probably do it based on qualification. We will, we will make, make sure it is a company that specializes in this type of surfacing.
Well, that's going to be my next, to piggyback off of Dr. Washington, there are companies like Onslow, those crowd, Barnhill.
So the, the one that we, the one that Durham uses the most is Sorry Seal. And there's, sorry, not Sorry, Sorry Pavers, Sorry Pavers. And we've actually had them as subs on some of our projects. But that's who, that's who typically gets Durham's projects. So I don't, I'm not completely familiar with Onslow Paving Griddy. I do know that they've given us some great projects, but I don't know if they have this expertise.
Yeah, if they don't have the equipment, then they're not, if they're not doing enough volume, that's why we wouldn't have it. You know, somewhere down the line, if we find a project like this and Wally thinks that he can bring a team onboard and get the equipment, that'll be a request that comes through. But our local paving companies that do these other projects, if they're not doing this, they're not going to have it.
They don't do it.
Yeah, it's going to be totally specialized.
Nobody else does it, right? You don't see any around here.
No.
A lot of the paving companies will travel, anyone is, so.
Yes. Well, and admittedly, when we, when we went to Durham, like I said, they contracted everything out. The, the engineer that they had that does all the evaluation, it was Withers and Ravenel, they came and Sorry Pavers actually showed up with a representative and walked us, because they were doing the project, so they walked the project with us. Thank you. I'm sorry, I guess I'll have to tell Scott I won.
Thank you, Wally. Any other questions, Wally, before we move on?
You missed dinner with, with Scott and stuff.
And Keith was paying.
Now we don't care about our fourth quarter financial.
You've got to sit down and discuss. Get a sandwich and stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent out the email with these, with both this item and the next item to council last week, I think right before Ms. Marshburn sent out our agenda. So you can look at the numbers beforehand and then look at any of the comparisons maybe from previous reports. One caveat that we add on this fourth quarter financial report is that the fourth quarter financial is a tracking mechanism so that you have a concept of where we finish the year. But mind you, the mechanism that we use for how we actually finish the year is called the audit. The audit will give us hard numbers up until this point before we get the audit in October, November. We, we just simply capture this as, we want you to use this as a comparing, a comparison tool to give you an idea of where we're at. So with that, I'll leave it to Sabrina if she wants to add anything else on there.
I just, the fourth quarter, I always say, you know, we do a lot of things. Once we close the year, we book receivables and payables and there's still payouts coming in. There's depreciation expense, there's a lot of things that happen. So this is strictly revenues and expenses, just to give an idea of. And again, it's not all of the revenues and expenses, but it's most of them.
I highlighted a couple of things on, on revenue areas just in the email, but one of the areas that you look at as we start to think about going into '25 and already planning for '26, you look at the revenues, compare those basic to expenses and sanitation's one we keep talking about because we're tracking that year over year to see how we're doing in that enterprise fund. You always look at the water and wastewater numbers to compare those, but you want to look at the ad valorem tax growth and the sales tax growth. That's a number that, that the state always talks about in terms of how their sales taxes do, are doing, and then that the county looks at in terms of both ad valorem and sales tax, because you want to see those growth factors within the community from the projects that you know have happened. And then we want to know how that impacts it. And it goes back to, to Mayor, your question of how do we pro, how do we continue to manage rising costs, just like Wally's saying? Well, we do it by managing the budget through our revenue streams. Without adequate revenue streams, we can't maintain those expenditures. So it doesn't matter what we see other communities do on their expenditure side, we can only do that which we have based on our, on our revenue. So overall, good report just in terms of the financial. And then you also have on this item, you have the investment report as well as the second attachment. Hopefully you were able to.
Seeing a reduction already from, from the items that matured, the borrowing or the, not the borrowing, but the bonds we've put out and whatever. You can see it's already dropping in anticipation of rate cuts, so.
Ms. Adams, for the releases and refunds, there is five items that's listed. The number four talks about senior citizens exemption. What would be examples of that?
I believe there are some exemptions for property tax that are, that are given. And so that's what that would be. And for senior citizens and military, they pay and then they're refunded. So that's where the, a lot of the refunds come from.
Okay. So those exemptions for those senior citizens that will basically come from the county assessor's office?
Yes.
The only follow-up on this, Mayor, I'll say is now we just wait anxiously for audit to be completed so that we can deliver those numbers. Some of us wait more anxiously, Sabrina. The rest of us know that we've managed this throughout the year and we're just excited to see it, so we roll into the next.
We can stand and anticipate the audit to be then.
I think our typical presentation is the first part of November, but.
It's usually, I think we have her scheduled right now for the first workshop in November or the first meeting in November. We typically, our financial segments are due to them by the first part of August or August, October. And then there's some back and forth and we usually plan to make a presentation in November.
Next we have Human Resources' second quarter report.
Mayor, we sent this report out too, but we gave you an update this evening just to give you, to clarify some of the numbers on the report. Wanted to share this with council and then have Kimberly to be able to walk through some of the things that we've seen in this quarter. You remember that we look at, we're tracking the movement between overall impacts of changes that council are making through our employee retention and recruitment efforts. So our, our challenges are consistently to, to recruit the best talent and to retain that talent once we get them here. Hopefully you can look at some of the numbers and see how effective we are being or areas that we need to do improvements, but I'll hand this over to Kimberly.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I really appreciate the fact that you take interest in seeing this on a, on a quarterly basis because we weren't reporting before. So my team really appreciates that, so thank you very much. When we look at our report, there are, am I going the wrong way?
No, we don't, we didn't.
Oh, right, we didn't have slides, that's why we gave you copies. Thank you. So, yeah, because we didn't typically present this, this was usually just a discussion item, so I apologize. So yes, we did provide you a copy. Please realize that this is a quarterly report and it's done on a calendar year. I know that a lot of the finance piece is done on a fiscal year. So this would be our second quarter for April, May and June. We cover really eight areas. We talk about our attrition, many of you may, you know, the term turnover. We cover applications and that is really an indication of how attractive we are. And then hiring demographics. We also cover our career development, which is something we implemented shortly after I got here as retention tool. We talk about employee statistics, years of service, retirement, and then a quick review of comp strategy. So with that said, I'll just hit a couple highlights and then happy to take any questions. So if you look at our recruitment, selection and retention, as far as attrition goes, the bottom line is we're staying steady. We're hitting about 26% over the past 12 months. You see some tweaks here and there. It's running pretty consistent. Our applications are up and that's good news. We are for, we're up 23% for the same quarter, same time last year, we're at 4,586. That continues to climb during the second quarter, which I think is great news. That does mean that we're being a little bit more attractive than we have been in the past. And I think, you know, if you look at the, the pre-COVID numbers, it's a little, you know, scorely, so we look, I typically look from 22 forward and you can see how we're climbing. When we, I'm switching over to hiring demographics. And on our hiring demographics, I'll cover just who we've hired this last quarter. We see 48.8% are white, are not Hispanic or Latino. For Black or African American, we had hired 23.3%, Hispanic 16.3%. And then two or more races is 11.6%. We are including our population and that is derived from our census data. As you can see, there is, we put in there a click link for you in case you wanted to look at the census data. And then our basic overall employee population is to the far right. I will move to our career development again. This was developed as a retention initiative previous to our career development program. We, for example, we could have a maintenance one, two or three position. And if you, if you had a maintenance three position, you could not fill it till it was open. We moved to a career development, which is really about value to the organization. So if I have these knowledge, skills and abilities and can move to a maintenance two, why would I wait for there to be a vacancy? Let's, let's go ahead and evaluate you on those skills that you're demonstrating and move you to that too. So we put together a very clear career development plan. As a matter of fact, we were talking about it today. We piloted it with our sanitation department years ago and then grew it by department. So we now have a career development plan in place for our own departments. It's been hugely successful. So we've, during, for that program in this quarter, we had 30 employees who completed the required training and certification requirements and moved forward or up. Then I'm not going to go through your personnel statistics, I know you'll see those there. Good news is we've hired 81 people so far this year and 43 this quarter. Years of service celebrations are really super cool. I will go through those numbers, but what we do is we advertise those on our SharePoint site so all employees can look and see. We send an email that says, hey, for this month, you might want to recognize these people. Send them an email, give them a pat on the back. And then we put that on our SharePoint site so everybody can see it, all the employees. It's interesting because newsletters don't seem to do well anymore in our space, but these SharePoint sites do. So the things that get the most look are birthdays and anniversaries. So we, we utilize that to attract people to that site and then we use that site to advertise other things as well that we're doing. Total retirements, I will let you know that is on a fiscal year. I've talked to the team and we're going to move that to a calendar year so the report is consistent. We have 12 this quarter. And then compensation, there's no real new updates except that we are still, we're, we're meeting all the guidelines on your adopted strategy to be at the average of our market. Thank you for doing that. It has been a huge success. We really appreciate that. As you know, you approved a market adjustment of 3%. That went into effect as of July 13th, so all the employees saw that in their paycheck on August 2nd and I'm sure they want to thank you as well. And then of course, you know, the additional, in addition to the market adjustment, we do the annual employee evaluation cycle. And then you, you approved an increase for that, that generates a pay-for-performance model that we implemented last year under our city manager's direction, which we truly love. That performance evaluation training starts with our directors in the late August. We'll be meeting with them the last week of August and we go through specific training because we're trying to make sure there's consistency with scoring. And then we meet with all supervisors and train them over the month of September and then the evaluations take place. And then those scores will go into effect with those pay-for-performance increases effective in January. The only other thing of importance, all of it important, but I know you all are familiar with the Fair Labor Standards Act and we have exempt versus non-exempt. You have two categories of employees and just as, I'm sure you know what that is, but exempt simply means, you may refer to it as salaried, but exempt means we're exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act. So you don't, most people describe it, there's many different things that describe it, but it's, you're not eligible for overtime is what most people know it as. And non-exempt employees are eligible for overtime. Well, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, the U.S. Department of Labor has a new salary threshold. There is a test. See, people nod in their heads, you know what I'm talking about. There is, you know, you can't make all employees exempt, right? Because that would be illegal. There is a test for exemption status and non-exempt. And one of the biggest components of that test is your salary threshold. The salary threshold has been moving and it moved affected July 1 from $35,568 up to $43,088. We found zero impact with that move because all of our exempt employees made more or at that threshold. However, there is potential effects with January 1 proposal. The January 1 proposal you can see is much higher at $58,656. However, it is being challenged currently in court, in the courts. So I don't believe that that's, none of us believe that that's going to pass at that level. We do believe there is going to be something. We don't know what that's going to look like, but we're monitoring that and we're deciding if and how many people would be affected by that. So that is your quarterly report. Thank you.
Thank you, very helpful.
Happy to take any questions.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Williams, I know that you are part of the NC MAC and you are or have done work with NC for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. So my question is, considering this is a military town and we have a lot of military talent, particularly individuals with leadership ability, what is it that council might be able to help your office with in terms of attracting those individuals in our community with past military leadership ability to, to be hired not only within the city at mid-level position, but in the C-suite?
Wow, I love the way you think. Thank you. I appreciate that because you know how passionate I am about serving our military. So I'm not sure what, what you can do. I think we do an exceptionally good job in supporting NC for me as an organization, North Carolina for Military Employment, that helps give us access. I think, I think that, well, that's a loaded question, so I'm going to answer. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. I'm going to answer in several ways. The really cool news is that most of the people that we're exiting, we have 20,000 transitioning service members that leave our bases in North Carolina every year because we're the fourth largest department defense presence, as you know, because I know you remember of MAC as well. And what's interesting is previous to 2021, when we did not, we were taxing the retirement dollars for our service members in North Carolina, the state of North Carolina decided to not do that after many, many years of working with legislature to pass that. And thanks to you and the Military Affairs Commission for that. Because now, where we used to have a small percentage of people that would stay in North Carolina or want to stay particularly in our area, now that's up to 85%. That is huge. The transitioning unit service members that we survey want to stay in North Carolina and many of them in Jacksonville. The reality is that Jacksonville and the surrounding area cannot necessarily support that many employees that want to stay here, the service members that want to stay. And to your point, those that are leaving, that are in high-level leadership positions, there are not many positions in our surrounding area that we can pull them into just by the period numbers, right? I think though, with not just our state, others moving to hybrid jobs, it does offer more opportunity. So it is becoming more attractive, thank goodness for us, right? Because we get to keep them here and help contribute to our tax base. Many of them do want to stay here and do hybrid jobs. I would love to think that we could keep some of our leaders across the military in our, in Onslow County and Jacksonville. We don't have a lot of the careers that will support their salaries. I would be up for any suggestions on what we could do. I would be up for any suggestions on what we could do as a city to, I mean, I know what we could do. We could help encourage economic development and grow that 400 acres and put in some new manufacturing and development. That would be great because that would help us do that. But I don't really have an answer on what we could do.
Have you thought about maybe having like an ad hoc group of some of your retired military, both enlisted as well as senior level, and just bounce some ideas? Because when I think about NC MAC, and I'm sitting around the table with generals from different ethnic background, I know that we have that same different ethnic background here in the city of Jacksonville. So I'm wondering what type of creativity that you could, that jobs could be created that we didn't once think about, that we might be able to create to bring that attraction and not allow that expertise go out into another municipality, but we can use them right here in the city of Jacksonville?
One of the numbers, Mayor, that we, that we look at now, 24% of our current staff is former military. That's a huge number. There's no other place where you're going to find a group that is that large. But I think what we look at is, the ones that we lose, last year, we had a conversation with Colonel Ferry, Todd Ferry. He was exiting the Marines after 32 years, plus or minus, and the conversation was, how do we keep him and people like him in the community? If you recall, Tim Salmon was an exiting military, worked with NC for Me, worked with Mr. Massey and Kimberly, and became a manager in a regional place. But again, he had to have a job in this area, had to have a good fit in a military community to get into work. That's part of our challenge. You look at HR, HR, less than two months ago, had two former military, high-ranking military. Now, we just brought in a, another former military individual. Mercedes just started with us a month or so ago. She's exiting, exited military. We have a spouse of military in HR. I think you're spot on in terms of how do we keep that talent where they go. But if you look at our management positions throughout the city organization, Michael Connors, he's Wally's deputy, and he's prior military of a number of years. Like, these are some really good individuals serving in those roles. Part of that discussion we had today was, how do, what jobs will they go into when we bring them in? And that's the, I think that's what that, what's the program when they, when they're exiting and they can?
Skill Bridge.
Skill Bridge. So when they were looking at Skill Bridge, where potentially they could work with an organization for six months or so to try and see if they're a fit. I think that's something, too, that we can continue to push to try and bring somebody in. Think about our engineering department right now. You can have some of those very intelligent individuals that are engineers, especially whether they're in the Marine Corps or they're in the Army, that we could bring in, and that's a, that's a high-ranking position within the organization. Also, project management, any of those positions, I think those are creative positions, too, that we, we want to make sure we're looking at. I like that concept of, of trying to figure out, because as we're recruiting people, you never can have.
So Dr. Washington, I kind of have a small answer for you. So General McKissick connected us with a gentleman who runs, he teaches economic development at ECU, and he asked if he could work with us to meet with small groups of transitioning service members to talk about what kind of careers they're looking for and what we could do to keep them here in our area, but also the state of North Carolina. I think we can expand that, based on what you just said, to not just talk about what they, what we could do to keep them here, what they're looking for, but maybe what we could do with companies. I do, I would love to see us do something because EDP and C Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, and I think obviously you know Chris Chung, who presents to MAC often, I just feel like they focus so much on everything west of here, right? That Raleigh area and so forth, and we don't have a lot of focus here. I think that most of our transitioning service members would like to stay here if there were jobs here for them. I just don't know how you get the jobs here. Go to the source. I would love to see what we could do, and I'm happy to help any way I can. But today, I presented to about 85 retiring service members at New River, it was Campbell and the New River combined, at New River. And you're talking high-performing individuals that have been in at least 20 years and they're retiring. They're either officers or senior listed. And in talking to them, they're more than happy to stay in the state of North Carolina. Thank you for your report. Yes.
You have some one city moments that you want to?
I do, and I wanted to give you real quick the update on our weather. So with Tropical Storm Debbie.
Thank you, Kimberly.
With Tropical Storm Debbie, we have been tracking this for the last couple of days, and yesterday, the mayor signed in our declaration of emergency. That was in response to the state's declaration, and then today, the federal government declared a state of emergency for certain parts of the country. We're in that part, obviously. So we do that as a, as a preemptive measure for FEMA so that we can ensure if anything happens, we have potential funding to support cleanup in response. If we don't do that, then, then we miss out on that opportunity. So we just want to make that clear for all of the citizens watching, that's why we do that. But then we married that with press releases and social media that our media team is sending out to explain to people why we do it and then what they need to do for safety measures. So when we do that, last night at 7:00 p.m., then the next action was we activate our emergency operations center, which Fire Chief Tomlin mans that, and that opened up at 8:00 this morning, and typically, we're going to run that 48 hours. We may put it out to 72 based on the response. And then Mr. Massey and I have calls with the county. We had one this morning, we have one this afternoon, we had one yesterday afternoon. So we have those morning and afternoon just to monitor. Chief Tomlin took the call at 5:30 today for us since we were in here, and their report was currently three-fourths of an inch of rain in the past 24 hours. No issues in the city, no power outages, forecasting four and a half inches of rain overnight into tomorrow. Wind potential up to 39 miles per hour, storm moving slowly, three miles per hour, anticipated to pick up speed. Under tornado watch in Onslow County until 11:00 p.m., and then calls with the county will be suspended. That means that we've lowered the, the watch, basically, unless something happens of significance. In the EOC, we will maintain police department, fire department, and public services for this whole time. So they'll be in there nonstop. If we need anything, they'll respond. Remember, in the EOC with Chief Tomlin, he makes those decisions based on the proclamation that the mayor, the declaration of the mayor is signed, and we'll keep you updated on any significant changes. Right now, we're expecting the tropical storm to touch the coast of South Carolina at about 2:00 p, 2:00 a.m. in the morning, and then to go up around Florence to the west of Fayetteville, and then go up north. But trajectory-wise, it loses, it's supposed to lose a lot of the wind impact and the rain impact by the time it gets into North Carolina. So that's just our tracking, county, city communicating well in this. Our media people are working well together to issue out the statements. If you don't see something, please send me a message so I can get it over to Lisa, and she can work with the county. Or if you need a response on something, please let us know. You know, it's a, it's a very good process that we have set up, and we just need to make sure that when we're having times of tropical storms instead of hurricanes, we're making the process as efficient and effective as possible so that we're ready for the bigger. If you remember last year, Tropical Storm Ophelia, we had a good test run, we found some holes there, and the same thing here, we just want to test out those processes. But if you have any questions, please send those to me, and we'll respond accordingly. Great for the update.
So we're going to still be doing the breakfast and the retreat?
We are scheduled for tomorrow, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if, if we see something, wee hours of the morning that changes, you'll have a message on your phone when you wake up in the morning that says, we're not doing it. But right now, we're seeing good.
Check your phone in the morning.
When you wake up, look for Josh Ray on your phone. It sounds exciting.
Always does.
I know, I know you always look at that.
I'm going to have trouble sleeping here.
The anticipation gets me, too.
TMI.
So Mayor, I do have, I do have one, one city moment that I want to share with you, and we alluded to it, Scott alluded to it earlier. We did have our Running with the Law event this past Saturday. What a great event. As Scott said, he talked about Mr. Massey's time, which was incredibly faster than mine because I'm nowhere here, anywhere to be seen, and that's great. I think we had over 400 participants in the event, 445 participants. It is our 11th year for Running with the Law. You're going to see our newly-minted Chief Phelps on the left. He's there with the medal. It has no place on it, not sure if he actually ran, I think he just showed up for the pictures. But the Running with the Law event's great because it is a fundraiser for our North Carolina Special Olympics. That's why it has such great significance, and it puts our officers firsthand in touch with the community, and that's, that's a beautiful thing. Most people are supposed to run in their full uniforms to make sure we know who they are. I'm not sure if Captain Funky ran anywhere, but he also posed in the picture. The fun thing is, these, these officers are there when everybody crosses the line to issue them their medals, and I think that's, it's an incredible outreach. Weather fantastic for the day, and a good opportunity for us to showcase the partnership. Also at this event, Mayor, something totally crazy happened. We have a doable red, doable blue challenge that we, this is second year. And so that's our police department against our fire department in things that they can do to stay healthy and to stay in shape. So it's a physical challenge between the two departments, supposed to be friendly. Last year, the fire department secured the victory by a significant margin. This year, as soon as Chief Phelps showed up, the police department jumped ahead, and somehow, with his leadership, they won the trophy this year. Chief Tomlin has not showed up to hand over the trophy, and we haven't seen him in three days, so he's hunkered down the EOC with the trophy. So if you go by there, you'll see it. But the police department did win the doable blue-red competition this year, and I think that's just a testament to the fact that both entities, one, they're looking out for their own personal health because that's their ability to be effective in their jobs, but for two, they're being part of the overall team in our community because healthy employees means great health insurance, and it means lower rates, and it means our ability to, to provide rescue services are at a, at an optimal level. So good job to both the police and fire departments for participating. That's it, Mayor.
At this time, I would entertain a motion during closed session to discuss the fact of issues, there's several items on that, so.
So move.
Second, second. Discussion, law paper, signature, and sign.
Aye.
All opposed.